Good morning. We'll go ahead and get our Thursday morning board meeting started with introductions in the room here. Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Okay. And then those that are calling in are virtual or video.
Zan, how's your commissioner?
Vance, County.
Morning Vance.
Morning Pat. George Lee, Public Health, EOC.
Morning George.
Charlie Fountain, Health Department.
All right, Charlie. Annabelle's there. Just wave to us, Annabelle. Can you hear us, Annabelle? Because we can see you. Annabelle, can you hear us?
Commissioner Harmio's having some difficulty, it appears.
I'm aware. Commissioner Harmio, this is Lilia. Can you hear me?
Sound.
No sound? Okay, we can hear you.
No sound.
Yep, okay. I'm going to have Melanie come back and assist you. Just give me a minute.
Oh, we can hear you.
We can hear you just fine, though.
Commissioner Harmio, can you hear us now?
I got it to now.
Okay, great. So I think the gang's all here. We'll go ahead and get started. Are there any announcements? Hearing none. Do we have any public that wants to comment? And I'll go over the fairly short agenda here. First off, we'll have Charlie Fountain give us a Health Department update, then Brian Lee, EOC update, George Looney talking about the financials for the last week, and then Kate Porche, economic development from the EOC point of view, and then after that, we'll have Commissioner updates if necessary, and the ever-popular other. So we'll go ahead and get started with you, Charlie, for the Health Department update.
Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, apologies from Danielle. She can't be here today. This is the AOC MHP meeting day, and they are discussing state funding for behavioral health today. So an important meeting, as we discussed before, there are some significant threats to behavioral health funding, as there are to all state funding. And so the priority really was on having her participation and making sure that she's up to speed on the latest discussions around mental and behavioral health funding. So the reason she is not here today.
No apology necessary.
Well, an explanation, then, to make sure people understand. No significant changes to either Health Department initiatives or direction, really putting the final touch on a number of plans, making sure they remain current. Kind of the same list we talked about before, the ones that will need particular attention that we're refocusing on is alternative care site plans. So this is the hospital overflow to create, and we do have some backup plans, but solidifying plans for after the OSU facility becomes unavailable in August. So no other big changes and no policy initiatives to bring forward to you. I think one thing that's becoming very clear to us by the day, particularly with the weather getting so nice, is that there is a strong yearning and hunger out there to get into Phase 6 as fast as possible, really just leap right over 2, 3, 4, et cetera to Phase 6 or 10. We are hearing essentially by the day from groups that are planning events, that are looking at gatherings with the assumption, you know, looking at what little rudimentary guidance we have that the governor has posted around Phase 2, and making assumptions that their dates, whatever that is, in mid to late June or early July, that we will be at that phase, and that they understand what the guidance will be, even though it has not been posted, and informing us that their organizations and groups are planning races and are planning concerts and are planning a variety of other events, and basically writing to whoever they have contact information for, whether it's Danielle, whether it's me, whether it's someone in the JIC, and just saying, "This is okay, isn't it?" And pretty much to this point, our standard reply has been that, you know, that early on, the governor recommended that all events, large events, be canceled through the end of September, and we have received nothing firm since then. And still waiting, and Brian is on your little more detail, but as we discussed a couple of days ago, still waiting for guidance around Phase 2. Do not have the criteria for application, really are not sure yet if it will just be maintaining compliance with Phase 1 metrics and criteria, if there will be additional, or what the process will be for applying. And we check the governor's webpages and with our organizations like AOC MHP and CLO, and Brian does so through Oregon Emergency Management, you know, what, if any clarity there is, and are still awaiting that. So I guess with all that means, we have very few updates and very little more firm information to impart to you.
Okay. Thank you. And I neglected earlier to introduce our information folks, Lilia Neville and Alyssa Raish, that are in the room. And what jogged my memory there is I'm wondering if I hear reports from around the country of hotspots, and this group had a barbecue, and 10 days later, whatever the time period is, can we, even if those examples aren't from Oregon, use those as examples of this is what you get by getting to Phase 6 or 8 or 10 way ahead of where we should be?
Yeah, to a, you know, with a degree of caution. I mean, even places like Alabama and Georgia, who have been wide open and have had some of the large gatherings and beach parties that we've seen and lake parties that we've seen on the news, are sort of couching their response around, they're also doing a lot more testing. Don't know how much of that is true epidemiology and how much is political expediency, given the administrations in those states and the resistance that some of those administrations have to stronger public health measures. Everybody is certainly watching those. I think closer to home, we have seen evidence, and fortunately, they got things under control rather quickly, but in Deschutes County, you know, noting some cases associated even with family and small group gatherings and some transmission through those venues. So I think, yes, we can use those examples cautiously.
This is Lilia Neville with the Joint Information Center, and I agree with Charlie, what he said, and what I would say, what we're seeing in the Joint Information Center is this definition of family is being expanded to extended family. We all have different definitions of what family means, and sometimes, for some folks, that means family that's 75 miles away. So we're adapting our messaging to perhaps household or, you know, phrasing that will indicate the individuals with which you have spent the last two and a half months with, as people are wanting to get out and about and in have these gatherings. Also, we have seen some on the news and in our social media monitoring about an uptick in case counts in central Oregon due to this varied interpretation of what family means.
Thank you. Anything else for us, Charlie, or any questions for Charlie?
Nothing else from my side. Happy to answer questions or try to answer questions people may have.
It seems like Tuesday you thought, or I don't know if thought or hope, that you would have some guidance on Phase 2 by the end of this week, which I think is tomorrow. Are there any indications that those guidelines are coming?
We have not received an updated timeline, you know, monitoring the governor's website hourly. I've received no information. I was just on a call before this with Morgan Cowling, who is the CLO executive director, and she had no more information about when guidance would be forthcoming.
Okay, Zan?
I do know that in our commissioners' call last week with the Governor's Office, OEM, and Dr. Seidlinger from OHA, one of the requests from the commissioners was that they wanted to hear first before any of those guidelines went out. So we may hear something tomorrow on our call with those entities about what they're thinking about Phase 2. And they did say last week on the call that they weren't looking at an application-based process at that time. So that's all I know, but I'm hoping that we'll learn something tomorrow morning, because I think everyone's really suffering from uncertainty and making up their own rules about Phase 10.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. This is an ongoing issue. We had a long conversation with OHA and CLO members yesterday. It's been frustrating on an ongoing basis for both OHA and local public health authorities to get first release of guidance by reading the Oregonian. You know, during a public health emergency, when we are given no advance notice, you know, I appreciate the governor's office, you know, they're doing intensive work sector by sector, but, you know, the public health system is having very little access to drafts or, and virtually no advance information. You know, I think we would be very good about embargoing that information were we to receive it even an hour ahead of time, but thus far, we have not, and it is very frustrating.
Charlie, Joe Kirby.
I understand that.
Charlie, can you stay on the line as Brian Lee gives his update? Because I do want to pose a question to the Board of Commissioners while you're both present. I believe Brian Lee is on the line now for his update, but Charlie, can you stay on the line with us?
Yes, absolutely. No problem, Joe.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll use that to transition to Brian Lee and the EOC update. Brian?
Yeah, so, morning commissioners. Just an update on the EOC side. We have a couple of directors here going through orientation, and obviously, everyone here is trying to finalize some plans and get ready for Phase 2 guidance. I was listening to Charlie, in the Charlie's brief there, and we do have some information that Phase 2 guidance will be out tomorrow. That came from Sarah Means yesterday to us. So supposedly tomorrow, we'll have more guidance. My understanding, though, was that there is going to be some sort of loose application process, but it's definitely not as formal as the last one, since that was not well-received, how that came out. So that's what I've heard so far. Couple other, let's see, I got a little update here. The broad strokes on Phase 2 guidance is, let's see here, counties will get feedback beginning Friday. The sector guidelines will be revised a little bit, specifically like restaurants. They might allow some more seating and things like that. The 10:00 PM curfew will go a little bit later. They don't have, they didn't tell us a time yesterday, but she said later in general. And then there'll be some guidance on the use of streets for businesses, so like street vendors, obviously farmer's markets, et cetera, et cetera. They're just going to put out clear guidance there, as well as new sector guidelines on small to medium venues, youth sports, and overnight camps. They are expected to increase gathering size up to 100 people as long as social distancing is maintained and masking and all the other standard procedures are in place. And then the rumor is they're going to allow quote-unquote "non-essential travel," which, as we saw over the weekend, people are already doing. But just general travel for recreation might be allowed. So there's still a lot of questions to be had, and we hope to get more. And then we have some clarification. We'll be in Phase 2 until there's a vaccine or treatment for COVID-19. So once we enter Phase 2, we're pretty much in it until there's a vaccine. Phase 3 guidance won't come out until that vaccine's in place, and then things will start to go back to normal, like quote-unquote "normal," as far as I understand. So that's kind of the guidance. I was under the impression we'd be under Phase 2 for three weeks, and then we'd enter Phase 3, but apparently Phase 3 will not happen until there's a vaccine. So that was just kind of a little update on Phase 2 guidance, as far as we received.
And all that?
And then...
Brian, all that information came from Sarah Means, is that correct?
It did, and this kind of echoes what Charlie was just saying. We're getting information from very roundabout ways, either, like Charlie said, literally the Oregonian, or from the governor's office, or from OHA, or from OEM, or from wherever, and it's, none of it has been unified or solidified together. None of it's been crystal clear and widely spread, so it's really challenging, because Charlie might get something and I don't know, or I get something that Charlie doesn't know. And we talk daily, in communication regularly at least, but then Kate Porche might get something from Sarah Means that neither Charlie nor I got, or the commissioners might get something that we didn't get. It's just, it's really hard to source all the accurate information and find out what's accurate, what's not, what's rumor, et cetera. So it's been a challenge, to say the least, in that way.
Is that the end of your report, Brian?
The only other thing, we are still regularly talking about staffing, you know, what this looks like over the next month or two. Charlie, Danielle, and I had just started email threatening discussions with Dr. Thompson as well regarding disaster declaration extensions and what the impacts are. So we're trying to get some more answers in place before we bring that dialogue totally in front of the board, but we are having that discussion and starting to look at that. Like, what would be the impact if we terminate or extend, or what does it do for us, or what are the risks and all that? So we are looking at that very closely here, moving forward.
Great. Any questions for Brian?
I have two questions, Commissioner Malone.
Okay.
Brian, the first question is, can you report out to the board on where we're at with the seven metrics that we're tracking as it relates to being able to stay in Phase 1 at this point?
Yes, and we can send you the, I guess it's like a basic graph, a breakdown of where all the counties are. We are meeting all of our seven prerequisites and the metrics. So we don't have anything that's really in the red. I think there was one thing early on that Charlie had some insight on, but other than that, we are doing actually very good. Our case count hasn't gone up, and I want to say five days or six days at least, and hospitalizations related to COVID have been very steady and flatlined. So we're doing, we're doing pretty well here in Benton County.
And I will forward those right this minute, Joe, with what's going up on the OHA website this morning.
Great, thank you.
Well, and the reason we're doing relatively well in Benton County is because of your efforts in getting cooperation from our citizens. So again, thank you for your considerable efforts to keep us safe.
Brian, my next question relates to the process for going to Phase 2. It's my assumption, and I'm just checking this assumption with you, that ultimately it's the board's decision whether or not we move to Phase 2. We're able to at least apply, it sounds like, to move to Phase 2 as of June 5th, but ultimately, doesn't that decision sit with the board? And if so, it would be good to get, it'd be good to get feedback from the board as to whether or not they are supportive of us moving to Phase 2. So that would be the question I would pose to you and to the board.
Yes, both of us, yes, that is correct. The board, it is ultimately the board's decision whether or not we choose to progress into Phase 2. And as of right now, depending what the application process is, the earliest we could start is June 5th. And again, the sector, the guidelines, and what would change from Phase 1 and 2 are not super significant, other than the gatherings piece, as far as we know. And we'll definitely, I am hoping, we're going to know more by tomorrow. But yes, I still welcome that board discussion.
Just a couple of follow-up questions on the points that have been made. Charlie, this dashboard information that OHA is posting weekly, is that going to be going up on Thursdays every week? Is that the rhythm?
Yes, yeah. They're posting that every week, and, you know, as you'll see on that, if you've opened it up, there's very little for Benton County, and that is largely, well, it's totally, because we have had a gap, and I don't have last night's numbers, but we had through yesterday no new cases since late last week. And so when there's fewer than five cases in a jurisdiction, the numbers are so small they can't calculate a trend.
Right, no trend, yeah. Well, as Pat said, thank you to you, all of the health folks, EOC and JIC, done a great job in our community. And I'm sure that the emptying of OSU helped too. So that's a factor.
Well, I think, you know, to the latter point, you know, this goes back to something that I've always said about public health. When people talk about public health, they point to the Health Department, but from our perspective, looking out, the public health system is the elected officials, it's the schools, and in this case, it's the entire population. And, you know, I don't mean to be, you know, have any false modesty, but, you know, all the efforts that we've put in, which are not inconsiderable, and I think, you know, in particular, the communication, has just been a gigantic lift during this. So hats off to the JIC group, but I think, you know, our entire population deserves a pat on the back every week for all of these numbers, because it really is, is obviously, you know, to the earlier point about looking at other states and other locations, that's what makes or breaks it. You know, we can be leaders, we can do what we can do, but without the application of those principles by the general population, we're at the mercy of the virus.
I'm knocking on my desk as you speak, just so, don't jinx us. The other question I had was that, Brian, with respect to considering the extension of our disaster declaration, one of the main considerations there is financial assistance, just to make sure that we can continue to charge expenses that we would be facing in order to continue to support our vulnerable populations and plans?
Yes, that would definitely be one factor on that. In terms of the FEMA reimbursement, I'm checking. I know a lot depends on when the current administration terminates the federal declaration. That will automatically end FEMA reimbursement options, but it doesn't mean we won't have our ability to implement our own processes locally, which is the advantage of it. So I'll kind of create a pro-con list for further discussion that we can dive into with, related to the disaster declaration process, when I get the solid answers from the state. So that, yeah, the main pro would be obviously financially, if we have it in place, and the federal one and state level ones are in place, we can get FEMA reimbursement on. But also, they give the local, you guys specifically, local power a little bit more teeth if we need to do things, you know, still follow the processes. So that's kind of the level of discussion, and I'm hoping maybe Vance is there, and maybe he has a little more insight, but I know all those powers listed would still be able to remain in effect if we do extend it. So I'll dive in a little more and try to get a more comprehensive breakdown of what the implications are.
Thank you. And Brian, if the board is interested in extending the emergency declaration, please give us a thought to the date to which we would like to extend the emergency declaration. Brian, I have heard the same thing with the county councils, organizations that Phase 2 is going to extend for quite some time. I'm not certain we need an emergency declaration for the duration of Phase 2, but that really does come back to the point that I'm making. You need, board, you need to be thinking about a date that you want to extend your declaration to. Now, keep in mind, you can always terminate it earlier, and you can do, just as you're contemplating now, extend it, but when I put together your extension of the declaration, neither of them.
Vance, should we have that on our agenda next Tuesday?
The extension or discussion of the date to extend?
I guess both.
If you'd like, I can certainly have a declaration put together that just merely extends your existing declaration. And then what I can do is I can leave the date blank, and then at Tuesday's meeting, you can decide which date to insert into that document.
Is my memory?
I would like...
Go ahead.
I'd love to hear the cost-benefit analysis that Brian and EOC staff are putting together before we actually affirmatively discuss extension or not, but I can recall exactly what the expiration date is on our current declaration.
I was just sitting here thinking, Zan, I don't recall either. I want to say it's June 30th, but is it 30th?
I believe it's June 30th. That's what I remember.
Okay. So we have plenty of time. And I do want to emphasize that your extension of the declaration really is a bit removed and independent from the cost-benefit analysis. That is just one component of your consideration. You can have a declaration in place with another effort, any number of reasons, not the least of which, of course, is your opportunity to accomplish reimbursement. the least of which, of course, is your opportunity to accomplish reimbursement for something.
Okay, thank you. And hopefully by next Tuesday, June 2nd, we will have guidance on what Phase Two looks like, so we can have that discussion. Because in theory, by a week from tomorrow, June 5th, we are eligible for Phase Two.
And Commissioners, that's the topic that I would like to bring up again this morning, is it's helpful for staff to understand where you're coming from currently, even if you're not ready to provide specific direction. But the question that I'm posing is, assuming if, if everything continues to ring true as relates to us meeting the metrics, is the board interested in moving to Phase Two as of June 5th? If we're able to? Or are you hesitant to move to Phase Two at this point? And we should not be focusing on June 5th, we should be considering a later date. So any feedback that you can give to staff to help prepare and respond at this point would be helpful.
Zan?
I'm assuming if what Brian is saying is correct, and Phase Two is kind of our plateau, so to speak, and here in Oregon, and we're not going to progress to Phase Three until we have a vaccine, that that means that all the rest of our business types would be opening? Because it's hard for me to imagine that we would envision theaters and bowling alleys and one thing and another not opening at all until, you know, 18 months from now. So I, I guess I have a little bit of caution until I know a little bit more about what Phase Two might involve, because some of those things might be challenging. I, I, so I, while in general, I'm for further loosening, I, I want to do it cautiously and carefully, and not recklessly. I'll be looking to Charlie and Danielle, Dr. Thompson.
Annabelle? You're on mute. You're on mute, Annabelle. You?
There, I was trying, I was trying to get it on, okay? I heard you. It's on now.
Okay.
My, my mouse wasn't working. I, I want to be a little cautious, too. I think that, that staying in Phase One for a little bit longer makes sense to me. There's, there's, it, it, there's some good things happening with that. And moving too quickly might, might kind of upset the apple cart, so to speak. But, but I don't see a rush to getting to Phase Two, quite frankly.
Okay. I guess I would say, I would echo the being cautious comment, especially as of today, we don't really know what we're deciding. And the other thing is seeing what our neighboring counties are, are doing, especially Lynn County, because we share the North Albany area. And so cautious and cautious and coordinated, I guess, would be my guidelines. So, Annabelle?
Yeah, and I think we also have to look at the county to the north of us, folk didn't get their, okay, to go right away. And I don't know where they are now in terms of, I think they're in Phase One. But again, that caution is important. I think, too, as, as things began to open up a little bit, there's going to be a lot of travel to the beach. And, and I think we've got to be cognizant of that. And staying in Phase One might give us a little bit of opportunity to caution people to just really be careful.
Okay. I think that having, keeping our message consistent, I think, is critical. Zan?
No, I think it's going to be very challenging. I guess what I'm saying is that I don't want to make any prejudgments, but we also have to recognize that people are going to, are already doing what they want to do. And if we try and be too conservative, I, I don't think that it will have any effect. So I just, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable, as Charlie says, you know, trying to make any decision about something I don't, that I don't know the contents of.
So it seems to me, Commissioners, that we need to bring this topic back to the board next Tuesday. We will have more information, or at least we think we will at that point. I just wanted to do a litmus test this morning to see what you're thinking, because we don't want to be tripping over ourselves, trying to submit an application if that's in fact what we have to do, if the board's not supportive of moving to Phase Two. So it sounds like next Tuesday will be another check-in point with the board to let you know what information we have at that point, and then test the waters with you again.
For me, I think I really want to hear the opinions of our public health professionals. That's going to make the biggest difference.
Okay.
And just one thing to chime in on, on the Phase Two piece. I'll, I'll follow up and find out what our neighboring counties are planning. I mean, I, I already know Lynn County's planning, but I'll find out about Lincoln and some other folks, just because if, you know, we are meeting all of our metrics, and, you know, we do, if we decide not to move into Phase Two, and all the other counties around us do, I'm not saying we have to follow suit, but we have to be really ready to message and explain to our population why we're not. So I, especially if we meet the metrics and everything else. But I think it's, yeah, let's have more discussion on Tuesday, and I'll hopefully have more guidance and more information to follow up on. But there is some concern there if we don't move into Phase Two with everyone else, if we don't have really good reasons. So just something we'll have to lean on the JIC and PIO very heavily to help us with. And I'm sure that you guys would get a ton of calls about it. So just a heads up there.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're right.
Lilia, a little earlier, you had, you were ready to make a comment, or?
Thanks, Commissioner. I, I forget what my comment was, but I was going to start out by thanking Charlie for acknowledging the great job that we're doing. And, oh, look, now I've talked enough, I remember what my comment is. And so it was about Charlie talking about prevention, public health and the community's responsibility. And I just wanted to add that this morning, at the executive team meeting, we discussed this concept of voluntary compliance. And that, that would be the community complying with these really strict guidelines around physical distancing and other COVID prevention measures. And so I just wanted to thank Charlie for his compliment from the work of the JIC, and just underscored that one of the main roles of the JIC is to produce messaging that encourages, develops, and promotes that voluntary compliance, so that we have a safe community.
Well, and I haven't heard, heard the phrase in a little while, but we are all in this together, and, and because of the voluntary cooperation that we've gotten from our Benton County folks, I think we're in pretty good shape. But it is tricky navigating some counties or, and, and people are ready for Phase Ten, and, well, that doesn't exist. Well, we don't care. We just want to get back to how things should be. So it is a delicate balance of trying to keep people safe, but also not getting too far behind what, what's actually taking place. Okay, thanks, Lilia.
Pat, I just want to jump in and just clarify. Based on what I'm hearing, I am not wanting to bring forward a renewed emergency declaration for Tuesday. And I'm going to wait and, and listen to the conversation that y'all have regarding Phase Two, and, and I anticipate bringing a renewed declaration to you for your meeting on, I think it's going to be June 16th.
Okay.
That's a lot more time to digest new information that comes forward, and it will probably give you a better opportunity to get a handle on how long you'd like a new declaration. So I'm just going to sit tight on the declaration and anticipate putting something in front of you June 16th.
I, I think that sounds like a great sequence, Vance. Just get as much information as we can, and I'm fairly sure our current declaration does last till the end of June. So we're in pretty good shape time-wise, so. Any other questions or comments for Charlie or Brian? Well, thank you very much for your reports and your efforts, and we will probably talk to you again Tuesday, June 2nd. A shiny new month. All right, next up, George Looney, and a financial update.
Good morning, all. I know this is what you look forward to the entire week, and this has been a short week. So the first thing is, I had hoped to have the personnel usage for you, but I will be honest, the, the short week caught me by surprise, and we were just struggling to get this report out to you. So it came a little bit later than I had hoped yesterday, but we did get the report out. And I'm going to, and I was hoping it was going to be a fairly insignificant week, really, being shorter, but it hasn't been. There's been a number of changes, and there's some things that I'm going to come back and actually ask you about your opinion thoughts. So I want to make sure we're giving you the information that's, that's important and relevant to you. The first thing, of course, is that our overall costs have now crossed over $2 million, a large jump, but we'll go back as to why that's happened. There's some things that have gotten included that, that I want to bring to your attention, and they're things that you're well aware of, but they now have shown up in the report. So they're starting to skew the report a little bit. If we go to the graph chart, and that's where we'll really start to, to see the things, you're going to see this huge line from last week that, that wasn't there last week when I, when I presented this to you, but this week, the, the things that have gotten added in there are the, some of the economic development, the $100,000 that went to the Benton Community Foundation, the $104,000 that went to Dev Northwest. So those had not been included before. They, they got recorded as a February, or, excuse me, February, May 15th, and so are showing up on there. So that, that coming, we're seeing some other things coming from some other areas. For example, facilities that started doing work throughout buildings, and those things are, are coming in. The other thing that I, that is important to note on this table, or on this page, is I had a FEMA reimbursement, or a, a total cost and what our reimbursement was going to be graph. That graph has kind of become irrelevant, difficult to calculate, so I've removed it. And the reason is with the CARES Act. When we first started that, the only funding we were aware of was the FEMA funding. Since then, we've had all kinds of different funding sources come in, many of them in the Health Department or the Health Clinics, and then certainly also within the CARES Act and, and the Sheriff's Department. So FEMA, while I think the consensus is that we will apply for FEMA, we're not really sure how much is going to be left out there that we're requesting for FEMA. If we can, we want to, we really want to get things through the CARES grant, because it doesn't have the 25% match, and the process is simpler, certainly the documentation is, is easier to deal with than FEMA. We're still doing all of our FEMA processes, it's just that, that we may not get to that point, and that may be a good thing. You will notice that, kind of, that the, under the grants reimbursement, we've lifted $243,000 for the CARES Act. As things go, that number got updated early this morning, and I couldn't get you out a new, a, a new chart, but we actually are requesting just over $1 million in the CARES Act, $1 million 15. The big difference with that was the original, the $243,000 did not include personnel costs. I had a, I know Mary's on the line, Mary and I chatted this morning, that we're going after the personnel costs that are included in the EOC. Will we get them? We don't know. If we don't ask, will we get them? No, we know that for sure. So let's ask, and let's see if they give them to us, you know, if we get them. So still, in the scheme of things, when we're talking $200 million, our request of $1 million is still pretty, pretty minimal, really, for, for what we're asking for. So.
George, that's our request as a county, but the City of Corvallis is also putting a request?
That is correct. And, and I don't know what their request is at this point. I, I haven't heard that number.
Okay.
But that is just the county. And, and actually, I should probably preface it that I think it's the county and a little bit of what we've called other entities, some of the folks, the little folks that don't really amount to a whole lot, but there, we have a couple of minor costs that are also in there that we might be able to get some reimbursement for. But, and I'm not even, I'm, I'm not completely sure that those are in there, but they're very minimal costs, and those would be from like the full of the fire department, or the Corvallis School District, or, or even OSU. So that's.
George, on, on the CARES Act, is that the pot of money? If the metro area had over 500,000 people, money went straight there, and then another, what was this, 1.5 billion total came to the state and is getting divvied up? Is, is that the, the pot of money that we're requesting from?
That is correct. And I believe it, the authorization, I believe, came from the legislature, but it may have been a committee of the legislature that allocated $200 million for expenses through May 15th, and then another $200 million for expenses post May 15th. And originally submissions were due May 22nd, but they extended that to May 29th. So submissions actually will be done tomorrow. That's why we were able to have a revised submission. And we already know that, that this submission was reduced by 204,000, that being the two amounts for economic development, both to the Benton Community Foundation and to Dev Northwest, but those will be requested in the next reimbursement, which is anticipated to be in July.
Okay, oh, great. That extra week of time sounds like very worthwhile, so.
I, I think it was. And so other things, really beyond that, the rest of business has been fairly, I guess, fairly normal, as, as normal goes, and we've had expenses here and there. But I would like to go back and actually kind of turn this around a little bit and ask the question of what it is you would like to see. Because what has happened is, my understanding is, this presentation and this spreadsheet started out kind of as costs for the EOC, and it has grown well beyond that, when we start including things like the economic development monies, or monies that are being spent on facilities. As we're showing revenue sources, we're showing revenue sources that really aren't being generated by the EOC, they're being generated by the Health Department, or the, the clinics, the Sheriff's Department. But the concern that I have also is that the Health Department, I know, is incurring costs that may not be getting put into this project, that they're being ran through their normal operations. And of course, they've received a substantial amount of funding for that, but it kind of is, I don't, I'm concerned that we're not giving you a complete picture, and I don't know if we can give you that complete picture, but I also want really to know what it is you'd like to see, so that we can kind of identify and get you the information that really is relevant, important to you.
Zan?
I think so far, it is capturing very much what I want to see, which is the EOC costs and some of the economic recovery costs that we are incurring, the grants and funding sources, and some of the other expenses that you're referring to that are occurring in health are listed in the, in the grant income. We just don't know what's being, what it's being extended on, and those expenditures aren't included here. But for me, it's really helpful to see that suite of funding sources, because I'm getting like popcorn, you know, all of these different. because I'm getting like popcorn, you know, all of these different announcements for funding opportunities. And it's helpful to me to know which ones are already in our pipeline and what's going on so that I don't just bombard people with the information that they don't need because they've already gotten it too. So I find this a really, really helpful communications tool.
Okay.
A great synthesis of what we're doing as a cross-organization entity for, with respect to the pandemic, with that caveat that we don't have the specifics in terms of some of the health money.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'm looking under total, the total cost page, and you've broken out, well, in red, which is helpful, EOC costs. And then outside, the EOC is a separate item. And I'm not sure what to say about the Health Department. That really does seem like a separate, if those are normal costs, it's nice to, at least on the Grants tab, to see the funding sources. And I'm not sure at this point, for me anyway, it'd be helpful, that it would be helpful to kind of delve into the Health Department budget. And it's nice to keep it as simple as you can and identify the, where the, where the big monies are going and where they're coming from. And I think if we need to talk about the Health Department at some point, we can ask that as a separate question. Zan?
I am assuming, George, that that outside EOC cost is mostly Health Department. Is that an incorrect assumption?
It, I think it probably is. It has to do, I would say, I'm trying to think of how to answer that. In the personnel piece, you're probably right. It's a lot of folks who are working on COVID-related things outside the EOC. Some of the materials, probably not. That's where things like laptops that have been purchased throughout the county or other purchases that maybe are not directly related to the EOC could be showing up.
Like flexible glass shields?
Excuse me?
Like flexible glass shields and things like that?
Correct, exactly. Yeah, so it's a little bit of both. But I do think personnel-wise, that you're spot on, that it is, that majority of that is Health Department.
Okay.
Actually, George, I was gonna jump in, but George answered it correctly. And a lot of the health expenses are ongoing expenses, so they're in the clinic budget. So you're not going to be able to see them. I know that Sandy has, particularly the ones that are, the grants were for specific uses. She is tracking that separately, so she could tell you. However, some of those grants were just revenue replacement and drawdown grants with no reporting requirement. So for the ones that she has to report, she's got it. The others, no, I don't know that she could give you any detail.
Okay. Annabelle, did you have any comment or question? Okay, I guess, George, to sum up my thoughts is, this is enough detail for me at this point. And I'm afraid otherwise we'd be on track to duplicating our regular budget with so many line items that might put some of us to sleep and have a hard time really identifying where the money is going. And so I think what you're providing us is, I think, a good balance of enough, enough detail so that we can get some sense of what the county is spending. And then on, like I said before, my favorite page, the Grants tabs, to see where funding has come in or potentially could come in. So, Zan?
I have one more comment, and that is that at some point down the road, it would be useful to hear from Sandy and what the health, what expenses the Health Department has incurred and where some of those supplemental funding streams have come from, the revenue replacement and some of those restricted purpose funds. And I do know that the state, I think also as part of the CARES Act funding, has a pot of money for testing specifically. And the money that's coming to us for that way is basically all based on demand. You know, it's what we ask for. And so I'm kind of curious about how much use we are making of that source of revenue to support our testing enterprise overall and contact tracing. So at some point, it'd be useful to have a report on that just so that, again, when I engage with some of the state agency folks and with AOC, I have a better sense for sufficiency of the money that we're getting for some of those elements. And I can advocate better on our behalf.
Good, good.
And I can, I can ask, she's on the, she took a week off. She was gonna go to, she was gonna go to France in April, and so she was quite disappointed with it. But now she's in San Diego at her house. But I will talk to her when she gets back next week and see if she can't put something together for you.
I think that would be a good compromise, George. You keep doing what you're doing and occasionally get a separate report from the Health Department folks to see what their budget looks like. So I think, keep doing what you're doing.
Excellent, thank you very much. I appreciate all of your feedback.
Every Thursday?
Every Thursday.
Okay. Any, Mary, did you have any further comments on the budget situation?
No, no. I like to see $2.5 million in grant money coming in. Oh, that's, that's really nice.
We can't see your face, but I assume you're smiling.
Yes, I am.
All right. Okay, if there's nothing further on that financial topic, we'll transition to Kate Portia and the economic development slash EOC. Kate?
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. So nice to see you all. I just have a handful of quick updates. No action or feedback needed, but wanted to just keep you in the loop with where we're at on a handful of items here at the EOC. Again, I know I have said this before, but you continue to have just such an A-list team of people working out here together on this. And the interaction between public health and economic recovery and the different groups, and even the interaction between the city and the county, I think, has been just incredibly invaluable. So we're grateful for your continued support through your people that are here. On the projects, we wanted to just let you know that we did complete the Back to Business Guide for Benton County. Those went out the door, as you may recall. This was the kind of handy, easy-to-read guide for businesses that basically contains all the same information that the governor's put out, but in an easier-to-read format with it's broken down for the different sectors, whether it be restaurant or personal services. So those went out the door late last week, and our partners are continuing to push those out through their channels. So the different chambers of commerce, the Business Association of Monroe, all of our different folks. And then, of course, we've now started Phase Two of that, which is the proactive phone calls to our businesses in Benton County. Nissa Cronin here at the EOC, who's actually joined our economic recovery team. I don't know if you guys know, but Heather Stevens, who is on maternity leave, actually is having her baby this morning. And so Nissa stepped in. We were able to scoop her up and pay her through the summer to backfill. It worked out perfectly. Anyway, Nissa helped put together a really nice script for our partners. We've put together a spreadsheet behind the scenes, so we will be carefully tracking which businesses have been called. We want to avoid any duplication, you know, so the same business isn't being called. And the idea here is that, again, it's just going to be that warm outreach, a check-in to touch base, see how the businesses are doing with the reopening, see if there's other information they need, and make sure that they've received a copy of the Back to Business Guide. We then are going to track any concerns, any issues that seem to be a pattern. And we'll also track if they need a follow-up or another touch on that. But we're, we're pretty excited about this proactive approach. We think it was really the right path forward for our businesses in Benton County. Also, with the Back to Business Guide, Catherine on our team is working on producing that in Spanish. And we will have that out to, and available for our Spanish-speaking businesses here shortly. Didn't want to, I think we had forgotten about that. The other item on sort of lines of communication, which again is such a critical part of all of this work that we do, is we have had just a small number, I think in total maybe three complaints that have come in through the channels that our awesome partners at the Jip help set up. So this is through the call center, through the Benton reopening email address. And there's also links available through the Benton County website that they've set up. So anybody can, if they have concerns about a business, how they're operating, they're able to put information in there, express those concerns. And what we've done is set up a process here at the EOC to handle those concerns. And I just wanted to let you know how that's going to work. If a business falls into the realm of the environmental health partners, then environmental health will take those calls and reach out, and again, in a very friendly and helpful way that they've been doing already. And so again, those, of course, I think you guys already know, but those are restaurants, personal services, pools, spas, things like that. We have a whole bunch of businesses, though, who don't fall in the realm of public health. And so the process that we've created is very similar to public health. But what we're going to do is through the EOC at the liaison branch, who I'm pointing to, they're right down the, right down the building here from me. The liaison team has, again, put together an awesome script. They have a spreadsheet. And they have a team that will be making these phone calls, again, which are intended to be handled in a very professional, warm, sort of check-in kind of way to say, hey, we did receive a concern. We wanted to check in with you. We want to make sure that you have the guidance and information you need so that you can operate safely for your employees and for your customers and keeping them safe. So we've, we've put that together and are rolling that process out now. But again, we're really, I think, we're trying to use these two sides to make sure we're getting the proactive approach for our businesses that are out there, that check in, making sure they're doing good. But then if there is a complaint, that process on the backside to get businesses what they need. So let me pause there, and then I'd like to talk a little bit about just a couple of funding things. But any questions on the Back to Business or the communication outreach efforts underway?
Zan?
Kate, what are you hearing in terms of feedback from the business community? Or is it too early to say what the response has been to partners making those calls?
It's really early. They literally just started like late yesterday, today. And so we ourselves will be making some of those. I have made a couple of one-off phone calls to check in with folks. I will say, the governor's office did reach out to us and ask for some feedback specific to the restaurant sectors to see how the guidelines are working for them. I reached out to, gosh, a couple of sort of trusted partner restaurants in the area and talked with them. And I think, I think the challenge is that aren't a surprise. I think, I think the folks I talked to, they understand the guidelines. The good news, I think, is PPE, the Personal Protective Equipment, has been more readily available than I had feared going into this. I was worried that we would have a slew of businesses unable to open because they couldn't get face masks for cleaning. And while some folks have maybe been a little bit delayed, they have been able to get the supply. So that's maybe some good news. Back on the restaurants, the one piece of feedback that I have heard, which isn't a surprise, is that with implementing the six-foot spacing, which is necessary, and they understand that, you get to a point in a restaurant where you've diminished, obviously, the quantity of customers that you can serve. And as we all know, restaurants are operating with such very thin margins. I do know there's some folks that are really putting pencil to paper to really understand if they can make, if they can make it pencil, paying staff, paying for the food, paying for the utilities, but with some fraction of the volume that they were able to do previously, right? So that's not an easy one to solve, but I know people are thinking about that now. To that end, I'm happy to report, I'm always happy to come back with maybe a solution or some positive news. I will tell you, wanted to make you all aware that in Corvallis, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk also and circle back, certainly with Chris in Palomos and the folks down in Monroe. But we are working on, Jerry from our team is leading an effort to create some outdoor space for businesses. Now, you guys may have seen this in other communities where cities have allowed businesses to basically use the right-of-way. And in this case, what we're, we're thinking about, it's still early, but a potential use of some of the parking spaces on Second or the side streets, that if the businesses choose, they could spread out, either have more outdoor seating, have more room for queuing, or potentially for selling their items. So Jerry's leading that charge right now. And as we get that figured out, the plan is then also to share that out with, with the rural cities as well. So that if they want to implement that, in Palomos, we'll kind of have a template for them to get going on that. So not, not a perfect solution. It's not going to solve anything. But I think, especially with the summer months, in a funny way, I may be worried that it's going to be too popular, that people are just gonna, you know, love it and flock downtown. And there's kind of a fine line. They want to accommodate and create space, but we don't want it to be such a great draw. So, but you know, we'll be monitoring that circle. So with that, let me just quickly update you on the two funding items that we've got going on right now. We, as you know, we applied for the Business Oregon Grant for all of Benton County. We did that joint application with the city of Albany. I really thought I would have an update to share with you guys, but we have yet to hear back from Business Oregon. That was an RFP process, and so I'm sure Business Oregon is just mad at work reading through everybody's RFPs. But we had heard that we would hear in the very near future. So as soon as we hear back on that, I will definitely let you guys know. And the other item is the CDBG funding that's opening up for rural communities. So again, this, I know there's so many of these floating around, and this one would not be for Corvallis. So this would be for the areas outside of the Corvallis city limits. These are funds available, really, we think the best path forward on these are the $2,500 per employee that's low or moderate income. So this would be any of the minimum wage workers that we would be able to help. And these are grant funds that pass through to the businesses where they, if they're able to either bring on or retain an employee for a year, they would be eligible for these funds. So we're working on a coordinated application for those funds for all of the rural parts of the county. And I will say, this is just another cool example of the EOC and a city partnership. I hit up Paul Balata, and he volunteered Kent Weiss from the city, who I think many of you know, but he's like a CDBG guru. And so Kent has teamed up with Rebecca Taylor here, who's here at the EOC. And they're jointly have put together this small working group to work on this application. And we're just, I'm excited. I love the way it's come together. There will be a need for a public hearing, a public notice on this. So we're going to keep you all abreast as to what that will need to look like. Right now, they're just in the pre-application phase for these funds. There's no deadline. It's going to be a first-come, first-served. We had already talked about it, but we will circle back, so we'll need to do a public meeting. And we're basically, we've got the team together. We've got a meeting today and should be back to you with some details on when we'll have that, that public meeting and get our application in. But those are, those are the two biggies on the funding side that I had. And I'd be happy to answer questions on any of that or anything else that you've got for me to say.
What does that application do?
It's funny. It's, so right now, they're just in the pre-application phase. And then I think it'll officially open. It'll just be a first-come, first-served. So we believe it'll be to our benefit to be first or early.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure if this is a question for you. I'm not sure if this is a question for you. I know there's been a discussion for getting PPEs to farm workers, and that there's, I think, today or tomorrow, a tangent, or can you speak to that program?
I can. I only know a little enough about it to be dangerous. I don't think Brian's on anymore, but if others are on that know more about it, I'm happy. But, yes, so there were, I will say, so there was an effort by the State of Oregon to get the K95 masks, or maybe they're KN95, I was getting terminology wrong, out to farm workers. I know that work is underway. I believe it's being handled directly through the state. I will say, though, in full transparency, I know there have been some concerns shared about that related to the breathability of those masks. They are not to be used in circumstances where you are exerting oneself or breathing heavily. And I do understand the State of Oregon was going to put warning stickers on the boxes, but I think some of my folks who know more about masks and health and breathing have expressed some concerns about the use and making sure that if they are going to be putting them out, that folks really understand who and how they should be used. I've expressed those concerns up through Sarah Means at the governor's office as well. That's as much as I know.
And that distribution took place yesterday at the Lynn County Fairgrounds.
Okay.
Thank you. See, I'm sorry, I should have just let Zan talk because she could have answered so much sooner and better.
It's just because I sat in on the liaison group work yesterday focused on housing and food.
Oh, great.
All right. Any other questions for Kate? Well, appreciate your update and your crew's hard work. Zan?
I do have one more thing, and this is that I had a preliminary conversation with some of our Lincoln County colleagues yesterday about potential funding from the Economic Development Administration to help with relatively more distressed areas of our jurisdiction. And what they're looking at under this particular call for proposals or notice of funding availability in Lincoln County is a broadband initiative because they, like anyone else, have discovered that there are lots of dead spots in the county where kids can't do remote learning or who can't take advantage of telehealth other than by telephone. So what the goal is to set up a tri-county proposal and probably including select, considering tribes as well. And so that's a big lift, but I passed your name along, and so you should expect to hear either from Katie Jacobson, Commissioner Jacobson over in Lincoln County, or from Rachel Matta Hughes, who's working with them as their primary finance person for their EOC. So I think it's an exciting opportunity. I know that there are areas in the county, whether it's up in Soak Creek, or Wren, or I don't know about the rest of Kings Valley, or out in LC that have pretty loud coverage.
No, sounds wonderful. I'll be happy to chat with them. And I will say, I mean, exactly to the point of why we did the joint application for Business Oregon with the City of Albany, I think any time you can go into these rounds of funding and show regional alignment, it just greatly increases your chances of being looked upon favorably. I mean, and it shows that you're coordinated and working together, and that you're aligned in goals, and that you have similar goals to the region, which we know we do. So, yeah, happy to talk with them, Zan. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for Kate? Thank you, and I appreciate your frequent updates and look forward to the next one.
All right. Happy to do it, Commissioner Malone. Thank you very much, all.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Commissioner Updates. Annabelle or Zan, do you have anything? Okay? Nope? Okay, I have--
I do.
Oh, okay. Zan?
I wanted to let you know that I have been participating in an ongoing conversation that has been led by Corvallis Housing First with a planning grant from Meyer Memorial Trust focused on permanent supportive housing for Benton County, focusing initially primarily on the Corvallis area and on the hard-to-house population. And there have been two large group conversations and then some listening sessions that have occurred so far, and they're posing in on kind of a preliminary concept for permanent supportive housing, and then we'll be putting together an action plan for a strategy in that regard. So this is a key plank of whatever work we would envision under the HOPE Advisory Board as well, but it's being led by Corvallis Housing First. So it's exciting, and I just wanted to let you know what's happening. There's actually quite a bit happening, you know, around this COVID event, and I think we can look forward to seeing an action plan coming out of that process sometime later this summer.
Okay, great. Anything else? I've got a couple items. First of is thinking about our Thursday meetings that we added to our schedule about 10 weeks ago, and it seems like things are starting to wind down as far as frequency of need for policy-type discussions and decisions. I can see that next week, because of the Phase Two discussion, we'll know after Tuesday, but we may need, I guess that would be Thursday, June 4th. But anyway, be thinking about that. It's considerable staff time, and if things are getting more routine than they were a month or two ago, I think we should review if we need the Thursday board sessions. So stay tuned on that. And the last item, do you have any, anything for the good of the group, George? Joel?
Commissioner Malone, I do not just would like the board to give that some consideration in terms of maybe migrating away from two board meetings a week. It takes anywhere from eight to 10, maybe even more staff that are involved in one form or another, and so it is a considerable amount of effort. If it's beneficial to the board, of course, we will continue to do it, but if there are other ways to manage other than having two meetings a week, we would certainly be interested in the board considering that.
Seems like we're getting more towards updates rather than policy decisions that obviously need to be made, but I think of the item on the agenda of, I guess, Commissioner decisions, and we put that in about 10 weeks ago, and I think I made one decision in between meetings that was ratified at the next meeting. And in the 10 weeks since then, that's been a very lonely line item on the agenda where we haven't used it. So I think there's an indication that we're, things definitely aren't back to normal, but we're getting used to our current situation, and things seem to be functioning fairly well. So, Annabelle?
Yeah, Pat, I don't disagree with you. I would like to, however, keep in mind that as we're moving through these phases, if we have to meet, that we keep kind of a block of time available for that, so we don't have conflicts with other entities that we might be working with. So just having an idea that if we're going to, if we have to meet, it would be on Thursday morning or whatever day we choose, and then just I'll go from there, and that way I can block my time to be able to be available.
Well, and Teresa, I think, is still on the call and can help with our schedule and maybe keep at least an hour Thursday morning clean and available. Zan, did you have a comment?
Just wanted to echo the sentiment that seems to be common among the three of us, that it's probably time to stop meeting regularly on Thursdays. Although I agree with you, Commissioner Malone, that it would probably be best to meet next Thursday, given the Phase Two process, and then perhaps thereafter drop Thursday. But I would like to still see the financials come out, you know, and then we can review them at the following meeting. I find them really helpful, so thank you for that.
And I throw out this as a possibility. I do think it's beneficial to have these on the schedule, and perhaps when you decide move Phase Two, that is, that would be the time to automatically drop the Thursday. Because I think, Zan, you make a good point, that you're liable to be getting more information at different times of the week that is going to be able to, that is going to enable you to consider when you'd like to move Phase Two. And having the flexibility of hearing those on Thursdays, I think, might give you a smoother glide path to that Phase Two. And to me, it just seems like a logical point in time, but obviously, if the three of you think Thursdays are becoming unnecessary, you can be certain, you know, besides you want to halt it now, but just from a convenient standpoint, so that you're consistently getting enough information to make good decisions heading into Phase Two. I'd throw out the option of having the Thursday meeting and at the time you move Phase Two.
Okay. Well, like I say, Teresa, I think, is still with us and can start adjusting the schedule, but keeping in mind that we may want like a 10 to 11 time block that is available if needed. The last thing I have, and I meant to do this at an earlier meeting, but Representative Mitch Greenlick died not quite two weeks ago, and probably not a big name in the state legislature, but in the healthcare realm, he was a champion and a giant and used his kind of career work, I think, as a health administrator at OHSU, and then almost 20 years ago, moved into the legislature and has been a champion of expanding healthcare to all Oregonians. I contrast his approach using his considerable background in the healthcare field to benefit everyone to a U.S. senator who used his position to, it looks like, to benefit himself. And I think the old saying, elections do have consequences. Mitch Greenlick will be missed. He's no longer physically with us, but his efforts will live on, and I'm sure other people will pick up the cause. But I, and he wasn't well-known. He didn't seek the limelight, but he did his work, and I think probably worked up till... He had health issues for several years, but he was still working on the cause that he believed in. So have some kind thoughts for Representative Greenlick, and do what we can to help the cause along of getting healthcare to everyone that we can. It's more important now than ever, but, so I thought that might be a good way to close our meeting today. So if there's nothing further, we will see you next Tuesday. I assume we're at the Sunset Building, is that the--
How will we continue to meet here, Commissioner? That's correct.
Schedule going forward, so that'll be 9:00 next Tuesday, June 2nd, and see you then. Bye.
Thank you.